Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education's 25th Annual Presentation of Awards for Distinguished Service to Public Education. I am Brenda Wolf, President of the Board. On behalf of all of my fellow board members, I want to thank you for being here this evening to celebrate these amazing individuals in our community, including our babies, two of our students to come up. Before we proceed with the ceremony, I would like to introduce the talented James Hubert Blake High School String Quartet. These students graciously agreed to provide entertainment for us this evening and performed wonderfully. We have Hocklin Molina on the violin, Sam Willis on the violin, Eric McWilliams on the viola, Jay Lee on the cello, and Audrey Tabibi on the string bass. Please join me in thanking them again with a round of applause. You all have been excellent. So, speaking of our students, I would like to acknowledge the beautiful artwork that you see around the room in the back that is displayed. Please take a moment at some point to appreciate the incredible talent of our MCPS students as well. Now, I would like to take a moment to allow board members to introduce themselves. I'm going to start with Dr. Dhaka.
Hi. Judy Dhaka.
Ms. Evans. I'm looking around. I see Ms. Mandrowski, Dr. Javtis, Ms. Aluni. Who am I missing?
Harris.
Oh, Ms. Harris. There you are. Have I got everybody? Thank you. We're so very excited after two years, two years we've been unable to do anything, that we are finally able to celebrate in person this year. This event is a time that we, as a board, get to know and show our appreciation for all of those who support our successful school system. This is an opportunity to demonstrate the incredible pride and appreciation we have for each of our awardees. The final slate of nominees was determined unanimously, and my colleagues and I remain grateful for the opportunity to recognize these individuals that helped make Montgomery County Public Schools the amazing system it is. I also note that I failed to recognize the Dr. McNidas here, our soon-to-be superintendent, currently interim superintendent. So, tonight, we honor members of our community for their exemplary work on behalf of all of our students. To our 11 award recipients, we are happy that you are here and we hope that you have a memorable evening. The program provides details about each awardee as shared by their nominator. The nominators will also provide you a few highlights about each awardee virtually, and then each awardee will share their own remarks. I also would like to ask the honorees to remain at the end of the ceremony so that we may take a group photograph. I know we're excited to get started, but before we proceed with the ceremony, I'd like to take a moment to recognize a few special guests who have joined us this evening. I saw our council president, Gabe Albernaz. Okay. I also see our former board member, Mike Durso. So, without further ado, please let me introduce Board Member Scott Javtis to get us started celebrating these incredible individuals and organizations.
I have the great privilege of introducing our first category, Community Individual. This category is to recognize individual community members who have made significant contributions to public education. We begin with the first nominator video for Mr. Clarence McNeary.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mr. Hooks, the founder and director of 40 Club. I want to thank the Montgomery County Board of Education for having this event that recognizes so many people who pour into the lives of our young people in the community. I recently received this award many years ago, but I wouldn't be here today without the work of Clarence McNeary. I've known Clarence since a young adult, being a participant in the programs, and now he serves as Watkins Mills Youth Development Program Coordinator, serving all the students, specifically the African-American population. He takes very much pride, provision, poise into his work. He's very committed and passionate and well-known. He's been an advocate, a leader, and has been a part of all the special events. He's been a volunteer in many different ways and worked with many different organizations to make things happen, especially during the pandemic where he strategically coordinated at food distribution side of Montgomery Village Middle School to make sure we have adequate fresh produce for our community. Without him, we wouldn't be able to serve every single weekend, any holiday or weather for that first year that we all were struggling in. He's also a Watkins Mills High School football coach, where he dedicates his time after work hours, during work hours, to support young men. He works with everyone and anyone, and we really appreciate that, and I appreciate him. I know his family is proud, continue to do a great work. He's very invested in his profession. He loves his community. He loves Montgomery Village, and his work is showing off. So, again, thank you for everything you've done. Celebrate with your family, you know, enjoy the recognition. You know, we have work to do, but I really appreciate you. So, then, thank you, everyone, for tonight. It takes a village, and this is what makes Montgomery County Public Schools, Board of Education, Montgomery County, its best. Have a great night.
Ladies and gentlemen, Clarence McNeary.
Had a chance to think about what I was going to say, and I decided not to. I decided that when I stood up here, it was all going to come to me, and it has. Montgomery Village is a very special place, and just like anywhere else, it goes through its turbulent times, and the question I always get is why? Why would you wake up on a Saturday when you don't work at 7:00 a.m. and drive to a Wheaton, Sam's Club, or Costco and load a van full of fruits and vegetables and raw meats? Or why would you get up on a Saturday and exercise with a young man? Or why would you take a call at 11:00 o'clock from a distraught youth wondering, you know, where his next meal is going to come from? And my answer is always the same, because they deserve it, regardless of race, religion, income, gender, sexual orientation, they deserve it. Every single student in Montgomery County, every single student in the United States, and every young person on our planet deserves someone that will answer the call when they need them. And I'd like to thank you all for answering the call when they need you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Clarence. I now would like to recognize Catherine, and I hope I'm pronouncing her name correctly, Catherine Navarette. Can we show Catherine's video, please?
Good evening. What do I say about Kate Navarette? Kate was an impressive student, and I was honored to have her in my honors 10th grade English class, but what Kate has done outside of class is absolutely inspirational. Her leadership and foundation of a club called the Body Positive Alliance has changed life for so many students that I see coming to those meetings. I see students who are insecure and anxious, and they don't have a place where they feel like they can talk about those feelings, come and find a home, and Kate has created that for them, first at Whitman and now through chapters all over the county. Kate has also taken her lessons online, establishing a social media presence, and when the pandemic hit, all of those BPA meetings moved onto Zoom. She's created a podcast, and I loved reading her Instagram posts that influence and educate. Kate is a leader among leaders, a visionary, and she does all of this while maintaining a rigorous course load, friendships, extracurriculars, and just being an all-around wonderful person. Thank you so much to the Board of Ed for recognizing Kate Navarette this evening.
Kate, come on up, please.
I want to thank first the Board of Education for giving me this award. So, as said in the video, my name is Kate Navarette. I'm a senior at Walt Whitman High School in Bethesda. I'm 17, and I'm a body positive advocate. I lead a nonprofit called Body Positive Alliance, which, as it said in the video, I initially started as a club during my sophomore year with the help of Ms. Fuss, who is here with me tonight. My advocacy is driven by a personal struggle with eating disorders that I encountered my first few years of high school, and since recovering, nearly three years later, the organization exists in high schools and colleges all across the country. We currently have chapters in five states, and now our mission is very oriented to help not only those who struggle with body image, but also help marginalized people combat appearance-based oppression. Again, I want to thank the Board for awarding me with this, and Ms. Fuss, and my guidance counselor, Ms. Williams, who are both here tonight as well, for nominating me and attending the ceremony. I also want to thank my team at Body Positive Alliance. I couldn't have achieved this without you. And for everyone else that has supported me through this, my friends, my family, other community members, I want to give a big shout-out to you for being instrumental in not only developing my advocacy, but also this organization. Leading a nonprofit and putting my story out there, recovering from two eating disorders at 17 years old, is not the easiest task in the world, and I do make a lot of mistakes, but I appreciate your patience, support, and love endlessly. Thank you all so much.
Our next awardee is Alexandra Robbins. If we can show that next video, please.
I nominated Alex Robbins the Distinguished Service Award because Alex is a fierce advocate of public education, MCPS, and MCPS school staff. Alex has always been an advocate volunteering her time and substitute teaching, but during the pandemic, Alex was especially determined and fierce in her advocacy. In early 2021, when vaccine appointments were hard to find and teachers were on the precipice of returning back to school, Alex started hunting and booking vaccine appointments for MCPS staff. Because demand was so high, Alex formed a group, Adopt a Vax, and her and her team booked over 5,000 vaccine appointments for MCPS staff. Alex herself booked over 1,000 appointments, spending upwards of 18 hours a day sometimes searching and finding appointments. Alex also, when it was time to return back to school, donated PPE to the schools, including KN95s, hand sanitizers, and other needs for the teachers. Alex continues to volunteer substitute teach and use the money that she gets from substitute teaching to buy school supplies and Day Bright Nurse for staff. Alex, there is no one more deserving than you for this award. Thank you for everything that you do for public education, MCPS, and MCPS staff.
Alex Robbins, come on up, please.
First, Kate, fellow Walt Whitman Viking, go Vikes! You do Whitman proud! Thank you for what you do. Thank you for this honor, which I share with our remarkable vaccine hunting team, and I'll explain why they're remarkable in a moment. Grace Lovelace Gichard, Alicia Eberhart Bliss, Kristen Schwartz, Julia Rogers, Lisa Gutman, Sebastian Amar, Ruth Katz, Stacy Derrick, Ariana Ross, Stacey Svandoris, Erin Snedecor, John Moyer, and W. Tipton, with special thanks to Maisie Miller and the Vaccine Hunters, Las Casas Vacunas. One of the remarkable things about our team is that many members are teachers, so whether they waited until 1:00 a.m. for the Rite Aid appointments or woke up at 4:30 a.m. for the CVS drop, these teachers sacrificed sleep and precious time because they were dedicated to the health and well-being of fellow educators. I mention this because they shouldn't have to. That's what the rest of us non-teachers should be doing, going the extra mile to support educators. This is one of the most difficult times in recent memory to be a teacher. Crucial elements of public education are under fire. We are lucky that MCPS educators are permitted to teach history as it actually happened, and thank you to MCPS and the Board for allowing students the freedom to read. But there's so much more we can do. To help teachers, we can steer resources toward, among other things, smaller class sizes, more staffing, fewer standardized tests, a lot fewer standardized tests, unwavering support for music and the arts, and actual paid parental leave, for starters. It's humbling to be included with this group of awardees. I believe they and everyone in this room share a common goal. We all want public education to thrive. For that to truly happen, we must prioritize teachers' health and well-being because schools can't survive without them. For the sake of public education, for the sake of our students, and for the sake of our communities, it's time we put educators first. Thank you.
Okay, congratulations again to all three Community Individual Distinguished Service to Public Education awardees. Now, I'd like to introduce our student member of the Board, Hannah Aluni, to present the next category. Hannah?
It is my honor to introduce the next category for tonight, which is for the community group that has made a significant impact to education and MCPS. Please watch the nominator video.
It is a great pleasure to nominate the Foundation for Hospitality and Restaurant Management, FARM, for the MCPS Distinguished Service to Public Education Award. In 2018, before the uncertainty of COVID entered our world, FARM was a newly created foundation, joining the ranks of the Automotive, Construction, and IT foundations. The Foundation's office established a bridge of support between the hospitality industry, post-secondary institutes, and MCPS programming. Dedicated hospitality leaders joined ranks with representatives from educational entities and established a nonprofit 501(c)(3) educational foundation. With a mission of creating opportunities within the hospitality and restaurant management industry, the goal of FARM has been to support future hospitality leaders and entrepreneurs. Since its inception, FARM has revitalized the instructional curriculums to align with national standards and has been working with MCPS to implement curriculum that ensures equitable access. They've developed professional development opportunities for MCPS teachers, including a three-day Taste of Hospitality conference for teachers and staff, lead lead mock interviews, engage students in paid internships, develop shadow opportunities, and have opened their businesses to our students. They've organized various fundraisers to benefit the programs and students. In 2019, Woodbough Country Club even donated their facility to host a gala that would be planned, managed, and operated by students. Despite being canceled due to COVID, the Farm Board continued to meet and promote the industry during the most challenging times this industry has experienced in decades. Although FARM is still in its infancy, it is evidenced through their actions that the Farm Board members have demonstrated time and time again their dedication to our students, MCPS, and the hospitality industry. It is a privilege to introduce the Farm Board to be honored with a Distinguished Service to Public Education Award.
I'd like to call up Mr. Child from the Foundation for Hospitality and Restaurant Management.
Kind of humbling the first three presenters there, so this could be a little more difficult for me, but good evening again. My name is David Child. I'm the general manager of the Bethesda North Marriott Hotel and Conference Center. On behalf of the Foundation of Hospitality and Restaurant Management, otherwise known as FARM, excuse me, I can only do so much without these. I'd like to introduce, joining me here to accept the prestigious honor, is Janine Becker from Choice Hotels. Yana Anderson, who is from the Montgomery College. Steve Bowden, the nominee, thank you, Steve, who's our liaison with MCPS through the Foundation's And Larry Schulman, the founder of Schulman Rogers, who is now a retiree, also known as the pain in the ass of Montgomery County Public Skills. His words, I will say, his words. I'd certainly like to express my sincere appreciation to the Montgomery County Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. McKnight for selecting the Montgomery County Foundation for Hospitality and Restaurant Management as this recipient of this year's Distinguished Service Award. Thank you. We were established in 2018, as Steve mentioned, comprised of innovative industry leaders, educational industry experts, and local business representatives to provide an authentic and unique educational experience to the students. These direct connections between the secondary, post-secondary, and business communities ensure the students seamlessly transition from educational opportunities to lucrative careers with the restaurant and hospitality industry. I believe that every student should be encouraged to explore careers and build skills necessary for life. There is no greater cause than the nurturing and development of young people, and we believe that industry has a responsibility providing direction in their journey and ensuring relevance in their learning experiences. The hospitality industry is often thought of as work in servitude, which is far from the truth, as the industry careers cost many disciplines, including finance, human resources, IT, operations, real estate development, and engineering, to name just a few. I myself actually started off as a dishwasher at age 14 back in England, and today I'm a third-time general manager. Under the direction of the Board of Directions, Farmers created and provided a myriad of opportunities to promote the sustainable experience for farm participants. For example, Farm partners have presented professional development opportunities to the MCPS staff, continuously enhancing and upgrading the curriculum to reflect industry trends and changes. For students, Farmers provided tours, visitations, and internship opportunities at local businesses, as well as creating mock interview experiences to help prepare students for job interviews. And additionally, Farm members are continuously exploring and promoting fundraising efforts to help ensure that we will have an enduring and vital program with MMCPS. Finally, I would just like to take a moment to recognize these programs and foundations would not be possible without the strong partnership with MCPS. We have the pleasure in engaging with the Foundation's office and its staff to create a firm foundation to ensure that MCPS graduates are well-prepared for their future in the restaurant and hospitality industry. With deep appreciation, I accept this award on behalf of the Foundation and look forward to growing this program and watching our students flourish in the future. Thank you very much.
Congratulations again, Mr. Child. We are so grateful for your many contributions to MCPS. Next, I would like to introduce my colleague, Ms. Lynn Harris, to present the next category.
It's my very great pleasure to present the next award, the Distinguished Service to Public Education Award in the Business category. This award goes to a Montgomery County business that has, for many years, been a strong and supportive partner for many schools in the Richard Montgomery, Walter Johnson, and Rockville clusters, and those partnerships have been so strong and so resilient over the years and so impactful that this business was nominated by four different schools, independent of one another. So, could we please play the nominating video?
Hi, everyone. My name is Steve Lightman. I'm the physical education teacher and safety patrol coordinator at Byrd Ruston Elementary in Rockville, and this year I nominated Manny Chavez from Paizano's Pizza in Rockville as a distinguished leader in the community for his help with my safety patrols. So, Byrd Ruston opened four years ago, and I had called Manny up and said something to the extent of, you know, can we do some kind of pizza deal? I'd really like to reward my safety patrols for all their hard work at school. Is there any way we can do something that's about $5 a pizza, and I'll just cover it myself? And to my surprise, Manny said, I'm going to do one better. I'm going to provide all the pizza for you. How many do you need? And I said, no, no, I can't ask you to do that. My 50 patrols. And he said, not a problem. I'm going to take care of this for you. How many pizzas do you want? I told him 15, and over the last four years, every month, Paizano's delivers 100% free-of-charge 15 pizzas to my patrols. It's blown me away. Every time my Montgomery County police officer comes in, he's more and more blown away that we have all this pizza here from Paizano's. Manny's just been super generous, and then last year, he even called me and said, I want to do this for other schools. So, he started working with other physical education and safety patrol coordinators, College Gardens, at Twinbrook, at Bell, all the Rockville Cluster schools he's been working with. And for that reason, I nominated him for this award because this is just truly remarkable how he's helping my students out and giving them a reward for all of their hard work. I've never had anyone do anything like this for us, and I'm beyond excited that Manny was able to win this award.
Good evening. My name is Regina Chavez, and I am one of the proud nominators of Paizano's Rockville for the Distinguished Service to Public Education Award. For the last eight years, Paizano's Rockville has been an integral member of the community in supporting MCPS students, staff, and families, and whether it's from front-office staff, PTA fundraisers, Booster Club, and concession stands, Paizano's has always been there to answer the call with innovative ways to support the community. All of the folks that support and work with Paizano's cannot all share words here tonight. I am proud to share them on their behalf. Thank you so much for all that you do, and congratulations from all of us to you in being recipients of the Distinguished Service to Public Education Award.
It's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Manny Chavez, the manager, and Ms. Rita Abi, the owner of Rockville's Paizano's.
Wow, the room's a lot bigger than I thought. I'm honored, just alongside all these winners. I've been reading their bios or the description of everything you've done, and I'm amazed that I even made it here today. So, I want to thank the Board of Education for choosing us. I want to thank Steve. A little biased, my wife made the nomination. And this starts from the top. Our owner's here, Ms. Rita B. Khalil. She's been a great leader in this, and I have to thank my staff. I might be the voice, but without the team, I'm nothing. So, thank you again for the award.
And now, I'm pleased to introduce my board colleagues, Dr. Judy Dhaka and Mrs. Shebra Evans.
It is so great to see everyone, and we're here in person, as President Wolf said, so just nice to see you all, and it is my extreme pleasure and honor, Dr. Dhaka and I, to introduce the next category. It is the It is the MCPS Staff category. And so, staff means they work for us, right? But they go above and beyond their call of duty, and I'm just so grateful and thankful for all that you all do. And so with that, I'm going to ask for us to show the first video for the nominator of Ms. Sharon Faber.
Sharon Asro Faber is an outstanding instructor who unequivocally deserves recognition by the county. Over the years, her self-directed ESOL theater program has brought great benefits to the community she serves. From taking her pupils to theatrical performances and inviting professional actors to lead in-class seminars, to crafting engaging lessons that both improve the language skill sets and expressive and imaginative capabilities of her students. This Moco superstar has done an amazing job at uplifting the county's marginalized community. Fortunately, Ms. Faber is looking to expand her successful projects to other schools throughout the county, so even more students may benefit from her vision for education through the arts. Fingers crossed she is able to pull this off. Along with her dedication to her ever-growing classes, Ms. Faber is always upbeat and has a kind and encouraging word for both her students and her colleagues alike. In short, this instructor is the epitome of what distinguished service in the world of education looks like. I can think of no one else more deserving. Sincerely, Marcus Tompros.
Very good. Congratulations. Ms. Faber, you come up, get your award. I'll put it right here for you.
You're welcome.
Wow, I'm really touched. I had no idea what video was going to play for me up there. So my name is Sharon Asro Faber, and I'm an ESOL and theater teacher at Watkins Mill High School. ESOL stands for English for Speakers of Other Languages. So I not only teach newly arrived immigrants English, but I do it through the arts, namely theater. My theater program for emergent English learners was just a seed of an idea six years ago when I began at Watkins Mill High. As of today, hundreds of English-language learners have benefited from the ESOL-friendly theater elective course I created, which uses culturally-based, trauma-informed theater activities to create a sense of community and a safe space to share their stories. As a result, they release the stress they experienced from reunifying with parents they haven't seen for a decade, also the stress of COVID getting through COVID and being a new immigrant. And they look at the world a little more positively and stand a little taller. In class this month, my students created original stories and scripts with dialogue, which they will be acting out next week, providing oral English practice and the satisfaction of creating their own piece of theater. Just today, I took a busload of ESOL theater students who had never been to a theater or a live play to the Gala Hispanic Theater in Washington, DC, to culminate a year-long course of study where we got to see a bilingual musical about the life of Gloria Estefan, something they could relate to as immigrants. And it was, they absolutely loved it. I wish I could describe how their faces lit up just being in the audience. And next week, we're going to the National Building Museum in Washington, DC, where some of our ESOL theater students' thoughts about crossing the border and being in this country are featured in a national exhibit called "The Border Wall" at the National Building Museum with audio recorded by professional actors. So it's a great honor, and we are not only representing MCPS, but immigrant teens throughout our country in this national exhibit. So I do want to thank some wonderful companions on this journey. My dear husband, Alan, without whom I could not have achieved any of this; my treasured son, Alex, who flew in from Boston for the occasion; my wonderful sister-in-law, Cheryl Faber, who came tonight; and my principal, Carol Goddard, who empowers me, whether you know it or not, you do; my resource teacher, Heather Holcomb, always there to lend a hand. Thank you. My assistant principal, Karen Torres Merryweather, who helped me make this idea come to life; my business administrator, Julie Broyles, who facilitates everything I do with a smile; my community partnership with Joanne Seelig Lampotter at Imagination Stage Oya May, who provides bilingual drama workshops for my students and unique programming; and my parent teachers, Student Association and Administrator Ryan Graves; and the support of our Wellness Center at Watkins Mill under the leadership of Lisette Darden and of ESOL counselors like Maria Garcia; and Mr. Marcus Tompros, a fellow ESOL teacher who you heard from tonight, who has really been my guiding genius and advocate. My message to you today is that sometimes all we need to do is to get something worthwhile started and take a few steps in that direction. And if it's beneficial to students, it will flourish and take on a life of its own. According to my Jewish tradition, we are not necessarily meant to finish the work we start, but nonetheless, we must start it. My hope is that my theater program for emergent English learners continues to flourish after I retire at Watkins Mill High a few years from now and be instituted in high schools throughout Montgomery County and Maryland. My message to our Board of Ed members and elected officials is to consider allocating even more funds for arts education and toward new immigrant programs. My message to administrators is to empower your staff to create new ideas for programs and courses that will benefit students, and just let them run with it. And my message to MCPS staff members is to find a school that empowers you and that values your talents and abilities, and that allows you to bring all of those to the fore and just fly. I, Sharon Asro Faber, ESOL and theater teacher at Watkins Mill High, got lucky in that regard. May we continue to bring all of our students experiences that make them feel worthy and nurture their hearts, minds, creativity, and self-confidence, and may we foster and find ourselves in an environment that allows this to happen. Thank you so much.
I am so pleased that you said such kind things about Watkins Mill High School. It is a wonderful high school. People don't know as much about it as they should. Carol has done a wonderful job of really putting it forward. And it's my neighborhood school. I live on Watkins Mill Drive, but I still like it. And I'm just really thrilled to be able to ask them to play the nominator video for Dr. Cara Grant, who is over there. And I've known her for a long time. She's done such wonderful work here with what we're talking about, social and emotional programs that are available for students. And so now that we're going full force into it, she can guide some of this for us. And I worked with her father at Argyle.
I am honored to introduce to you today a real-life one-to-one, Dr. Cara Grant. Dr. Grant has over 20 years of service supporting students, families, and communities across numerous workgroups. I nominated Dr. Grant because she has worked tirelessly in the community, serving the whole child through project development in Bewell 365, developing MSDE, HOPE, and PE curriculum framework documents, linking schools with free equipment and resources during COVID and even before COVID. Her list of accomplishments and services goes on and on. I am so glad the Board is honoring her today, and we celebrate her every day. You are so deserving, Dr. Grant. We love you. Thank you for your service.
Come on up, Dr. Grant.
Is your heart full tonight?
Yeah.
My heart is full. It's bursting, okay? I have that hot, warm chest, you know, like that exciting, my heart rate, my fib is going nuts over here. I don't think I'm in a fat-burning heart rate yet, but you know, maybe I'll hit cardio. I'm not sure. I just want to say thank you. Everything that I do, I do it from a place of joy, of spiritual connection, of a heart to serve. I have my spouse, Mike, my son, Mike, my son, Ruben, my son, Bryce. And coincidentally, the principal of my stepson is at the table, even though my stepson, Isaiah, couldn't be here today. And the principal of one of my sons, Mustini, is also here today. So that's why he's sitting on this side of the room. You know? So truth be told, you know, I didn't come into education very gently. I pushed a lot of boundaries. I was the kid that talked too much, was often distracted by others. And I still remember Ms. Robinson, my fourth-grade teacher. I'm still in touch with her. She found a way for me to do things when I was not feeling like doing the things I was supposed to do, right? And I didn't like school. It was hard. And so part of the reason why I became an educator was a sense of fulfillment and to have a model to find the kids that were like me and lift them up. You know, "lift as we climb" is a common quote in black culture, and we have to lift each other up. We can't be crabs in a barrel pushing each other down as others are elevating themselves in the community. And I very much believe that, and it holds true, because the issues we still face as people that are black and brown are every day. You know, worrying that my son can't walk to the store because he looks like a black man, you know, is real. And so the work I do is grounded in this system and in this place, and I've been so fortunate and blessed to see the joy in every moment and everything. And I'm seeing Rochelle, and Jeannie, and Dana, and Dr. McKnight, and they know, hopefully I'm a testimony, my actions match my words. But when I enter a room, I come with full-blown joy and enthusiasm. And it's not that I'm not denying that there is struggle, and it hurts deep down in my core, but I try to make it my day and my joy every moment to find out what we can do and the good for kids. And Dr. Connolly, she's, I'm looking at her, she's definitely the, she pulls me in with the trauma-informed practices and social-emotional learning work, and she has been teaching me and mentoring me along the way as well. But I find it my goal to really just find the joy in everything we do and bring each other up in it, because we can sit there and we can complain about what's not working, we can complain about mental health, we can complain about things, but if we don't have a solution-oriented way to get through it and to find and relate in the struggle, then we can't move forward. And that's why I come, and I love what I do every day. I know I may not wake up and say, yeah, yeah, work, yeah, right? But I do, because I find my why. And my why is the social-emotional learning. It's helping kids find those healthy coping strategies with health education, with physical education. Those are prevention strategies. You're stressed out? Ruben, what are you doing when you're stressed out? What'd you do with Pop Pop the other day?
My wife.
That's right. You know, you got to find your coping mechanism. For another one, it's creating music. For another one, it's drawing in the arts. But you have to find that coping mechanism, you have to find that prevention strategy, you have to find the good in yourself, and always see the good in others to move it forward. And I just selfishly have been blessed with folks like Rochelle, who's on the Bewell 365 group, with Dana, with the work with Dr. McKnight, that lets me have the autonomy to push boundaries and ask for more. Sometimes they say, no. But a lot of times, they say, go for it, you know, but you got to do the work, you know, you got to put your feet with your mouth. So thank you for this honor to have a concrete representation of the work that I've been trying to do and the work that we as MCPS have done to help our students, families, and communities. Because it's really not me, it's everybody that's in this room and an extension of all of us. So thank you.
Congratulations again, Dr. Grant. Thank you for all that you do. I remember when she was at Loiderman, and our girls were at Harmony Hills Elementary School, so it's been great to watch how you've come up in this system. Next, we will play the nomination video for Ms. Marnie Jacobs.
I'd like to thank the Board for their recognition of Marnie Jacobs, the Administrative Secretary at Ashburton Elementary, for the Distinguished Service to Public Education in Montgomery County Award. Mrs. Jacobs is absolutely deserving of this recognition. Mrs. Jacobs has been a parent at Ashburton, she has been a PTA president at Ashburton, and she currently serves as the Administrative Secretary at Ashburton. But those are roles that she fills. Mrs. Jacobs welcomes each and every one of our more than 900 students into the building each and every day. Mrs. Jacobs is involved in all facets of their education throughout the course of the day, supporting teachers, welcoming and supporting parents, and certainly has been my partner all along the way over my years at Ashburton. What really distinguishes Marnie Jacobs is her commitment to equity. Mrs. Jacobs is the first to recommend new titles around anti-racism, around diversity, and around inclusion when it comes to summer reads, beach reads, or things that we may want to share with our community. Mrs. Jacobs is a frequent presence in all of our community events. In fact, Mrs. Jacobs has a permanent memorandum to the record reminding her that she needs to go home and see her husband, Phil. Mrs. Jacobs is a pillar in this Ashburton community. She is the first person that so many of us met when we came into the Ashburton community, and she is the one that continues to welcome us back each and every day. What really distinguishes Mrs. Jacobs from many others is that the students come back year after year to see her, to see how she's doing, because they had that connection, they had that relationship with her, and they continue to do so. Mrs. Jacobs always knows what's going on in the community. She knows who is doing well, who needs support, who we need to celebrate, and who we need to reach out to. So, Mrs. Jacobs, I want to say thank you on behalf of all of your colleagues, all of your friends, all of the parents, all of the students here at Ashburton, for the award that you are being recognized with today. I can think of no one more deserving than you, and it is absolutely our pleasure to be able to be here with you to celebrate.
Come on down, Ms. Jacobs.
So usually, when I come to this podium, it was to do testimony before the Board or to run Admin Secretaries PLC. But I am very honored to receive this award, and I thank the Board for it. My children went to Ashburton, and I became that PTA president that never left. I've been fortunate to work and volunteer in a great community. We have tremendously dedicated principals, excellent teachers, committed support professionals, and students who are smart, creative, and kind. I enjoy welcoming kindergarten families into the school, helping to settle new teachers, and even the routine tasks of setting up the calendar for the year. I've helped with modernizations, addition projects, been on several principal interview panels, and served on numerous communities, including our Equity PLC. As a volunteer, I helped open a new cluster middle school, advocated for hundreds of thousands of CIP dollars, and have been president of the Walter Johnson Education Foundation for about 14 years. If I've made a difference in my school and community, it's because I've worked with good people, been supported by my husband and family and coworkers. I'd like to thank Greg Mullenhalz, my principal, for this domination and our partnership in running a big, busy school. Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs, and congratulations for everything that you do. Next, I'd like to play, have the nomination video played for Mr. Matthew Kamens, whom I have known for a very long time. And I just have to say that he's in charge of psychologists, you know, you've read that. Psychologists and PPWs mean a lot to people who work in the schools. They help us to provide an appropriate program for students, and we really appreciate the effort. So please play the video.
I met Matt Kamens in 2005 when I interviewed for a school psychologist position with MCPS. At the MCPS. At that time, Matt was the supervisor of psychological services. Then, after joining MCPS, I met with Matt one time per month, along with other first and second year school psychologists, as part of our orientation process. Over the ensuing years, I've had the opportunity to work for and with Matt in many capacities. He has served as a close personal friend and a professional mentor. I have been studying, working and teaching the field of psychology for over 20 years, and Matt is one of the most knowledgeable and caring educators I have ever met. When I am in need of professional consultation, Matt is always my first call. The number of lives he has positively impacted in his time with MCPS is incalculable. It is my great honor and pleasure to nominate Matt for this award.
Is this a great school system or what? Hey, wake up, guys. Is this a great school system? Look at all these people who work in this school system. There's not a better school system in this country. Am I right? And we got work to do. We've got a lot of work to do. It's hard to share 30-plus years of gratitude in two minutes. I appreciate the acknowledgement of my efforts, but I didn't do this alone. I've been really fortunate. I have great relationships with past and current Board of Education members. I was lucky to work directly with several MCPS superintendents who allowed me to engage in system reform efforts with them. And I'm indebted to the MCPS families, students, staff members, teachers, administrators, and my school psych colleagues. There are seven psychologists in this room right now. Seven. Several of them work as administrators, the others work with your children. Obviously, I believe that psychological services remains vital to student success. Therefore, MCPS must be sure that school psychologists are readily available to all students. In 2001, in her keynote comments at the National Association of School Psychologists Convention in Washington DC, Dr. Deborah Prothostith, Dean and Professor, Charles Drew University College of Medicine, and a preeminent leader in addressing youth violence as a public health issue, said to the school psychologists, "You need to give away what you know to those who need to know what you know." That simple message has guided my career. So I'm going to retire this year, but I'm doing it for two purposes. I'm going to retire so I can be available for counseling with Dr. McKnight and the Board of Education. You're welcome. Thank you again for this recognition. I appreciate all of you, and I appreciate those who have received the award.
Congratulations, Mr. Kamens. So now we've come to the final award in this category, and that goes to Ms. Kristin Seakin. So if we could play the nomination video, that would be great.
This year marks the 40th year of Autism Services in Montgomery County Public Schools. Written on a grant, Ms. Kristin Seakin was a student teacher in the first class for four students with autism. The autism program now serves over 900 students across 43 schools, ages three to 21, both pursuing alternate learning outcomes and those students accessing enriched curriculum. In addition, this year alone, the autism unit has provided over 350 consults to students. Over the past 40 years, Ms. Seakin has dedicated her career to providing outstanding services to students with autism. Through her leadership, dedication, commitment, integrity, and also a great sense of humor, Ms. Seakin has grown MCPS's autism services to the world-recognized, high-quality programs they are today. Ms. Seakin supervises, supervises a growing team of professionals who work together with a shared vision to continue growing and adapting autism services in order to best serve students. There is no one more deserving, and we are honored to introduce Ms. Seakin as the recipient for the Distinguished Service to Public Education Award.
Come on down.
You may be kind of verklempt. It's always hard to follow Matt Kamens, and I've done that a couple of times throughout the years, but I'm going to give it a shot. Good evening, members of the board, fellow honorees, and my cherished guests. Thank you for bestowing this award upon me. I wish that everyone here had the opportunity to experience, particularly in this really challenging year, the amount of joy and the amount of heart and the amount of happiness that many of us feel here tonight. I was a person who literally stumbled into a career working with students with autism and their families. I was such a long shot that I'll tell you now that I was denied a job in Montgomery County Public Schools due to my significant anxiety during my screening interview. If it were not for the talent and the determination of a sort of renegade school administrator, I'm not sure what I would be doing today. But I have had an amazing, almost 40 years that have gone by in a flash. I'm fortunate, I think, to have spent them here in Montgomery County. I am surrounded by people that I am honored to work with in a county that still strives to meet all these competing demands that are placed at our feet. I was talking to Dr. Wolf earlier this evening, saying, "How does it feel to go to bed at night trying to juggle all that we're juggling?" I know that I struggle to juggle my tiny part of the world, and so I look out at all of you, and I wonder how we're doing it, and yet here we are doing it. In a time when people are leaving public education in droves, I'm more convinced than ever, and I think that everybody here would agree with me, that the best key to an equitable society really is a strong and equitable school system, particularly for our most vulnerable and challenged students who I've had the honor of representing over the years. And so along that line, I, I want to raise up the work of my guests. Tonight, my guests are my director, who always calmly answers the telephone even at 6:30 on a Friday night, and she knows I'm not calling her about something good at 6:30 on a Friday night. Always. She, Amy, is an absorbent and wonderful leader who always gives me the ability to stand up, put my shoulders back and say, "Okay, we'll figure it out." The best psychologist I've ever worked with, who always reminds our team to be mindful of our marginalized and neediest families, and has been a role model for me of self-reflection and growth. That's my Sarah there. Two instructional specialists, Lisa Grant, not to be confused with Cara Grant, or Melissa Grant, who have worked side by side with me and Emily Stanley for 30 years, and I don't think I've ever heard them say the word can't. I particularly think of looking awkwardly into our first Google Meet, you know, when it was so dark and we closed down and we didn't really know what we were doing. And we were talking late one Friday night about the fact that we're going to have to lead teachers in teaching people with autism through a computer. It's hard enough to do in person. And they said, "We, we can do this." And together we did, and we've done so much more. I have Melissa here with me, who's a program specialist who has stood shoulder to shoulder with me through some challenging politics that probably would have choked another relationship. But together, we have been able to work through it and work on behalf of children. And Melissa is also the person I so appreciate for always giving me a safe place to have our hard conversations about race and equity, that for, let's face it, an older white woman, we're hard initially, but I so appreciate that you're always there for that. I have a very young program specialist named Lauren here, who, if I think back over some of the major hard work we have done in the past few years, has always volunteered very quietly and always been right beside me. She volunteered to co-chair a very challenging job, which is running childcare at the Special Education Parents Summit, where we bring together 100 children nobody's ever seen before, and we run all over the high school so that our families could participate in educational seminars. Lauren was with me here, as are some of my other teammates, in December of 2020 and January 2021, when we packed, I see Jeannie Dawson nodding back there, we packed 2,500 PPE kits for our teachers of students in discrete programs. They were so scared, and it was so important to us, that it was done right. So there were about five of us in this room, not knowing what we were doing, dodging and darting with piles of materials. And Lauren very quietly called me on, on the first day that kids came back to school in March, when everybody was scared, and said, "Hey, a teacher broke her arm, so I'm going to teach her class this week." I appreciate all that all of you have done, and these are just some of the distinguished people in my neighborhood. I, I, I can't say how honored I am, and I want to be able to raise the work of you all up, and I hope that board members and others, there's my friend, Dr. McKnight, when you look at that organizational chart and you see a position that I hope I bring to life some of the contributions that these people have made and will continue to make as long as they're around. My family fell apart a little bit, not in a bad way, but just in a family way this evening. But out in the lobby is my daughter and my very first grandbaby and my son-in-law. Hi, Rosie. I, I want, I want to, I want to express my love and my gratitude to my daughter. She is a hero of mine. She's an ICU nurse who started her job in the middle of the COVID pandemic. And she was not only a role model for me, but I was able to use her personal stories of working every day in a used N95 with all patients with COVID to talk to our teachers about, "Hey, we can do this and we can do it safely." I hope you don't mind the disruption of my first grandbaby, but I hope one day, and I hope our other baby, I hope if, if, if our babies are called to service, they'll know that you can have a, a, a service career that's filled with joy, and that certainly has been mine. So thank you all very, very much.
Okay, this is truly a wonderful, wonderful school system. I've always felt that way. And we self-criticize a lot, but we do a lot of good things, and I'm so pleased to have been able to work with Mr. Kamens, I used to be upstairs and he was in this building, and with Kristin Seakin, who worked with some of my difficult cases at Argyle, medical cases. So thank you so much, and congratulations. And a special thanks to all the award winners. Your actions make a difference for our students every day. And I would like to introduce my colleague, Mrs. Rebecca Smundrowski, to announce our
Good evening. I am so thrilled to be here in person and honored to be able to announce the final award of the evening, which is the award for Individual Pioneer. Before I do that, though, I want to say congratulations to all of your, all of you, all of our winners, all of the people who nominated. You are such incredible and deserving representatives of the good work that is done here in Montgomery County and the kind people that help our children, do everything, give everything to, to help our children. Someone earlier mentioned that the last few years have been a hard time to be in education, and let me just say, as a board member, they are not wrong. People can be quick to be harsh, and sometimes it feels like we're a little light on kindness. But I wanted to share a very quick little story about one of our, Dr. Grant, one of our award winners, that I feel like really embodies the essence of what tonight means and everything. But recently, we lost one of our, our very beloved colleague, Ms. Pat O'Neal, and she loved these awards. And unfortunately, when she passed away, well, I, I was honored to be able to fill her shoes on the policy committee. So after my very first planning meeting, which went really well, I got a card in the mail, and I think it was even at home, not even here at the office, saying thank you to me for my kind words about children and the energy that the board puts in to making things good for, for students. And I just, I'm sharing this because it's those small, random acts of kindness that really have a huge impact on, on people, and I'm very appreciative for everything that all of you all do. So now back to the awards. This award is for an individual who has made a lifelong commitment to public education. I am also very honored to introduce my former colleague, who I know was already introduced, but I'm just going to recognize him again, Mr. Mike Durso. He nominated Mr. Evans. So let's watch this, his nomination video.
In 1989, a career changer was hired by the Montgomery County Public Schools for a social studies position at Richard Montgomery High School. At that time, the principal also told this new teacher that he would be responsible for the mock trial team. 25 years later, at his retirement, this individual was still coaching the mock trial team. I came to Montgomery County a bit after that, but in following mock trial, it seemed that I noticed that Richard Montgomery was always either at or near the top of the local competition. And knowing that it was a pretty impressive group of, of young people, very dedicated, hardworking, that led that success, but it also made me wonder about the leadership of that team. This particular individual continued beyond retirement up till currently in an additional eight years of being the mock trial coach. So that's a, that spans about 33 years. And despite the success that Richard Montgomery has had, both locally, regionally, at the state level, I think the teacher would probably be most proud of how well his students have done academically, beyond high school, college, graduate school, with many entering the legal profession. So I would have to say, I'm pleased to introduce for the Distinguished Service in Public Education Award in the category of Individual Pioneer from Richard Montgomery High School, Mr.
Come on down, Mr. Evans. Yes, congratulations. Thank you. I was going to say, there you go. I've been to those mock trials, they're very good.
Thank you, thank you. I was struck by something that Dr. Grant said in her presentation, and the word that I think she used was fulfillment. And I think that's one of the themes that I'd like to strike this evening, is I was at a professional crossroads in the late 1980s, was severed from a job that was important to me at the time, but in, in my heart, I knew it really wasn't important, and I wondered what I was going to do next. I had a brother who was an educator, a wife who was an educator, and they encouraged me maybe to, to become a teacher. It was something that I had thought about. And so that was June of 1986, and during the intervening year, I got my teacher certification. But at the time, Montgomery County Public Schools wasn't really hiring too many social studies teachers at that time. It was a dry period. And I, I labored at subbing for a while. But I did that for almost two years, and I finally caught on at Richard Montgomery High School. I was a long-term sub there. And I met the fabled Dr. Culett, who, who hired me and said that I was going to teach IB government, law, and he wanted me to be the freshman sponsor and also coach the mock trial team. My tenure as the freshman sponsor didn't last really, really long. I initiated pudding wrestling that year, and Dr. Culett had to wrestle on pudding, and I don't think that went over too well. No, I'm just kidding. He enjoyed himself. But, but one of the things that I found out in my first year as a teacher was that, number one, I truly loved teaching. I loved Richard Montgomery High School, and I really loved mock trial. I only won one match that year, but I was able to kind of rest on the shoulders of these kids who were really enamored with this activity that's sponsored by the State Bar Association in, in consultation with the State Department of Education. And it was a, it was an activity that sort of wet my penchant for argument. My wife will agree that I like to argue. And, and although I only won one match that year, I knew that I had engaged a couple of kids. One of them was a young woman named Eve Rensicki, who actually was kind of a co-coach with me those first few years. You know, it's one of those kids where you realize they're a lot smarter than you are, but you just pretend like you are as smart as they are. And so I rested on her shoulders, and her and I kind of co-coached the team, and it got better and better each year, and to the point where by the early '90s, we were, you know, competing for the state championship. That young woman, by the way, has gone on to become the youngest tenured law professor at the University of Michigan and won the Bates Award as the best overall graduate when she graduated in 2000. And she was followed 20 years later by another Richard Montgomery mock traller who won the same award. So it's really borne some fruit. You know, after that first year, I got a little subversive about how I was going to nurture mock trial at Richard Montgomery High School, so I started doing mock trials in my classes in both IB government and in law. And that kind of cultivated an interest, and it just blossomed from there. And it's an activity that, you know, it really, it goes to show you that you really should not follow the money. You should follow your passions. The money will follow in one way or another. And it was just something that I never grew tired of. Each year, I say to my wife, "Maybe I won't do this next year." And then when the competition comes around, I say, "What else is there to do in retirement?" You know? In any event, it's been a good run. I've won a lot of matches, but I've lost a lot of matches. And I'll tell you, the team has lost, it probably learns more from the losses than from the wins. I lost this year in the state championship, but I think I, you know, it whet my appetite maybe to do it one more time. But in any event, it's an activity that operates under the radar screen, but the kids who are involved in, they know about it. They know it touches them, and they know it reaches into their soul when they work on it. It really channels their desire to make an argument in a rules-based system, which is something that our country really needs right now. It needs people to follow the rules a little bit. We can see that in our political discourse today. So in any event, I'm very proud to accept this. It's really nice to be honored. I never did it for the honor, but it's nice to be honored, and I appreciate that. I'd like to thank my brother, who supported me, who was an MCPS educator, who supported me in my desire to become Fred Evans. My wife, Michelle Evans, who was an MCPS educator, 35 years. Julia Angel, who was on the state finalist team this year, representing the mock trial team. And my principal, Alicia Dini, is here to support Richard Montgomery High School. You know, it really is a modest activity that has borne a lot of fruit for me and for the kids who really paved the way for me. And it's something that I just got passionate about. And, you know, it was kind of fortuitous that Dr. Culett said, "You're going to do the mock trial team." I never knew that I was going to do something like this, but it kind of whet my whistle. So thank you so much, and it was a great, it's a continuing run. Thank you for the honor. I appreciate it.
Well, congratulations again, Mr. Evans. Next, I would like to ask our board vice president, Carla Silvestre, to come up and offer some closing remarks.
Wow, wow. As our former county executive Ike Leggett used to say, "Together, we can accomplish great things." And I heard so many great things here tonight. And what really moves me is that it's everyday people, moms, dads, educators, business owners, going out of their way to make this world a better place. So thank you again for being here tonight. I'm Carla Silvestre, vice president of the board, and on behalf of the board, I want to thank you so much for coming here tonight to celebrate our heroes that are doing everything they can to better the lives of our students. I am grateful that we were able to celebrate in person because it's nothing like seeing smiles and hugs and affection like we saw here tonight. As we listen to the stories of each of the award winners, we were reminded that we are all in this together, creating the best school system for our students. After these two difficult years, the sentiment of gratitude we share for each other has only increased. We hope that you not only learn more about how individuals and organizations support our students, staff, and families, but also how much we appreciate and need these contributions. We must continue to acknowledge those showing kindness and going above and beyond their duties. Together, we will continue to recover, rebuild, reimagine, and reinvent our world. Tonight, we honored you, our community, working towards the very same goal of making this world a better place. We acknowledge their exemplary work on behalf of our students. To our award recipients, thank you for everything you do and you have done. Congratulations one more time, and thank you. Thank you for being here tonight.